So the purpose of this meeting today was do a question and answer session with actually legal counsel and also code enforcement. I hear there's a lot of questions that are going about or a lot of rumors per se taken on our stand of why we wanted to make it a B2, our recommendation actually. So we're gonna open up the floor to residents to ask questions to get the correct answer. And when you come up, just state your name and where you live, your address, so we can document it for a minute and we'll try to get every question answered.
Question to start, I was told that we were talking now about R3, not B2.
Nope.
Can I make a couple comments?
Yeah, sure, yeah, go ahead guys.
As you know, I'm a solicitor for the borough and they asked me to attend this meeting also and I can advise the planning commission, so that's one here. And those of you, and I recognize faces that have attended in the past the meeting, the final meeting to amend the zoning ordinance and change it to, it was gonna be B1, is that right?
B2.
B2. Met with a lot of opposition, which I was at the meeting, council heard that, and so council then elected not to enact that ordinance because with that many residents in opposition, maybe that's not the best idea. And so the discussion was, in my direction as a solicitor, was, okay, what now? And I think everyone recognized, we need some change down there because there's a problem that needs to be addressed. So what are other possible solutions? Well, when those are explored, then we send it back to the planning commission. So the planning commission then was directed to, let's advertise again and invite those same residents back. And what are some other possible zoning changes that could solve the problem down there, but also eliminate this strong opposition from the residents? So that's the nature of it. There's no draft ordinance that I was told about as to this is Plan B we're going on to now, so it's kinda just open. You know, what changes, and I think the planning commission wants to hear, what do the residents want? And considering what changes they might recommend to council, since the change to B1 was rejected, then do you have questions, comments that they could consider to factor in making in their recommendations? So that's my understanding of one of the reasons we're here, is that sound consistent?
Yeah.
Okay. And Dave, you had some comments as well?
Yeah, he pretty much covered it.
Okay.
But I'm not sure if council ever voted, or turning down the ordinance, I don't think they ever got some.
No, they didn't, they didn't even take a vote. They just, what they did was, they didn't say yes or no. But in order to change their mind and go back and enact that ordinance, it'd have to be advertised again, which essentially, we wouldn't have to send it to the county planning agency, which is the first step, which if there's a different solution now that is recommending council breach to, we have to go back to that step, which will be skipped now. But you're right, right now, council wants to see if the planning commission has a different recommendation based on the input of the residents. Maybe there's some better option.
Okay, my first, my question to you before we even listen to anybody else. Right now, it's a B2 area on 8th Avenue and the northern side of Ninth Avenue. Then it's an R1 area, for the majority of, from, say Ninth Avenue, the southern side of Ninth Avenue all the way up to 21st Avenue, so we'll run there. Just use that as a call point. Are we even permitted to consider another zoning area down there, or would that be considered spot zoning? I'm not 100% sure how much of a, because if we even do consider, or plan can even consider it, or council can even consider, so now you have a B2 for a block and a half, you would have, say we do say, I'm just throwing this one, R3 out there, because it was mentioned for a block and a half, and then we have R1. Would that be considered spot zoning? Or how's that spot zoning? Would that be even?
I don't think spot zoning would be if we took the one parcel that generated this whole request for change, if we rezoned just that one parcel. That's what spot zoning is. So if you look at the map and you see, you see consistency in some of the colors and the idea of zoning is that there are community objectives, which we have in our ordinance, and the zoning is supposed to be consistent with those community objectives. And spot zoning, it looks like an island. And in fact, there is something in this area that looks like spot zoning. It was changed long before I was here, I don't know why it happened, but it is what it is. But that's what spot zoning is, if you took one parcel and changed it, and that's subject to challenge, if someone wanted to. So that, I would recommend against, but we're talking about a relatively large area. And I understand there are already numerous pre-existing non-conforming uses that would fit into an R3. I think there are multi-residential units down there. So that would be a reason that's consistent with changing it, because you already have so many pre-existing non-conforming uses, it would make them conforming. So that makes sense. So it's all about what's logical with what's already down there, and is it consistent with the community objectives? That's the legal consideration.
So just a question to clarify what we're going over. Has everyone on this board been privy to the minutes from that council meeting? Like, do we need to rehash all the reasons we did not want to go to B2, or is this just to talk about?
Well, what this really was, was a, from my understanding, it was a question and answer session, because there was so much misinformation that was given to the public. And some of the stuff that was covered in the previous meeting was, you know, everything from Dollar General gonna go on 10th Avenue, to they're gonna tear down all the houses, and then recently it was, well, they wanna tear down all the houses and give it to Homestead. So I've heard everything under the sun, so the reason that, you know, we came up with the B2 for that area was because of, there's 30 houses on there, give or take about five that are duplexes, that are not covered, that are there. The rest are apartment buildings, and you got about, what, four churches? I think that there are structures there that are really limited on use. So what stemmed all of this from last year was that we felt that having a chance to be progressive with our zoning and do something a little different to bring in a business was a good idea for our municipality, especially considering our business district, A, is small, and B, relative to where it is now, that would've gave us at least a lot of different uses for the structures that are currently there.
But it was brought on by this one property?
It was brought on by this one property, correct.
No, that's incorrect. There's actually two properties. At one time, St. Margaret's Church was also for sale, and they were having the same issues. A gentleman from Skrull Hill wanted to come in and put, he wanted to live in, he wanted to put two units there, one that he would live on, like two or three units, I think it was, and he wanted to live on the first floor, and he wanted to rent the second floor off to various people that told him he wasn't permitted to do that. So there was actually two units, but more than that time, St. Margaret's did sell to another church. So there was actually two.
This specific ordinance that was written had more to do with the Ascension School?
Okay.
And it's also getting out in front of a potential problem. Let's assume all those churches closed, now you have four churches and they become abandoned. You don't want that. You don't want overgrown, dilapidated, deteriorating buildings, open to vandalism, vagrants, I mean, that's not good for the community. So we're trying to get in front of a problem that could occur by making an accommodation and creating some use for those properties to be repurposed, because it could happen eventually. It's certainly not unreasonable to consider that if those churches go away, then what happens to those buildings?
Right, and a lot of those churches are turned into minor areas of ruin.
Yeah.
That's a big thing.
And the communities that don't do anything with it, they're running into abandoned structure problems. So, hold, give me one second. So for us, I mean, again, you know, I wanted to make sure that everyone had a fair share and asked the questions that needed to be answered. You know, is a Dollar General gonna go in there? Highly unlikely zoning, will not permit that. Even in a business, you don't have enough offsets. So, I mean, like I said, there's so many confusing rumors and everything going around for you guys as residents, and again, I lived down there, so I understand the concern. But, you know, we wanna be a little bit progressive, to do something different, to make a change, to do something better for our community, because if we leave it go, it's gonna be, we're gonna be back to square one, and then what could we do with it?
When you characterize the zone that would be affected by this, or the area that would be affected by the rezoning, you mentioned duplexes and multiple, you realize that there are many single residential homes, like mine, like Aaron's, like a lot of other folks.
Correct, and I actually went down and counted for myself, there's about 30 actual homes between the other side of Ninth Avenue and the rest of 10th Avenue, with again, a handful being at least, I'm gonna say about five or so that I maybe miscounted that are duplexes. So you got about 25 homes that are actually affected by this, not including the churches that are there and/or the school.
Would you like me to step up to the podium with my question?
Sure, yeah, go ahead. Yeah, just state your name and address so we can put it on further.
Jennifer, Jennifer, and Latin B.O.U., G.H.N.E.R. And I have been a resident at 406 East 10th, which is the biggest south side of 10th, same side as the Ascension School, for over 15 years. So I think what my initial very, like, big stomach opposition reaction has to do with the fact that it seemed like one property was leading to the wholesale rezoning of our area. And as a subcategory of that, I didn't see or hear of any plan in place to make a good business district. It seemed like it was just happening because of this one area. I know that there isn't existing, you know, you've got some schools and some churches down there and so forth. Certainly, I think nonprofits still fits in the zone, right? Am I correct about that? If someone was to open a nonprofit, it could still work with a residential zone?
I don't know the permitted uses as well as Mr. Cannon.
I mean, with considerable type of nonprofit. I mean, only, really, come down to our single-family houses, churches, schools.
There is a section that talks about nonprofits. I'm just saying, there are some creative ways that people could bring in a nonprofit, even like the Arts Center, which I wasn't opposed to the type of business, although it seemed odd normally, I would think, but nonprofit is my business, so I think, you know, that could've been done as a nonprofit or something. Given the case that it was, really, I had opposition because, again, I didn't like the idea that an entire area was being rezoned for one property. There's something to me that's extremely important about our area, because it's an historic district, and I'd like to make sure that all of you in Planning Committee and, you know, folks on the council, it seemed like there were a lot of questions about the fact of, is it really an historic district, right? I mean, it is, there should be some things, you know, that are taken into consideration and pay homage to the history of this area. I mean, it's, my home was built by a steamship captain, and it's what it turned into a boarding home at one point, and now it's a single family residence. You know, these are important places that you're talking about. Across from me is the residence, used to be the bishop of the entire county, lived in this residence, there's a jail and a safe and basement, it's an amazing property. And, you know, I think we're just all trying to watch out for our properties. So the other thing, and I know that, you know, Mr. Cannon's clear of this, so we've gone back and forth here and there in different meetings, we already have some situations with parking, and, you know, in terms of safety, I've got concerns sometimes, like if there's concert there, with Druski Entertainment up at the Music Hall, for I don't know how far up. Emma, is it affecting your block?
To be honest, it goes.
Everywhere, right?
I live 114, so I know, I know exactly what you're talking about.
And I know that, you know, it looks to me like it'd be pretty tight for a fire truck to fit it through, as is.
It is.
I think, you know, I worry about public safety and those types of things. My big concern is just, I think someone needed admitted to me that they didn't know that the library opened on the 10th Avenue, front of 10th Avenue. And if you're in a position where you're serving with a council or a commission like this, and it was someone who didn't want to use positions, to not know that much, it makes me think, well, do your homework, come to us with a little bit of a plan in place. If you said to us, hey, you know, I would be open, at least I'm speaking for myself, I would be open if you said, hey, you know, we'd like to see this type of development or evolution in your area, I would want to hear about it. I wouldn't want to find out about it after a vote had been taken, which is how I really felt.
And sometimes that does happen, so let me just adjust just a few things so that we're on the same page. So when we voted on this, it wasn't just a one-meeting vote. If I remember correctly, for the members that were on the planning commission, it was a two or three meeting that we talked about, we brought it up, and we discussed it. So we actually met on this for two or three months prior, so, and we thought about future development, we did. I am too, I love history of the area, but also, I could see that if we keep thinking just about solely one thing, we're gonna be blindsided by when it all hits us and comes back on us and says, hey, we got all these dilapidated structures. So, and being a fireman myself and visiting those streets during peak Saturday and Friday nights, I know there is a problem with parking. But again, it's some of the other questions that were brought up and rumors were, well, we don't want to have this because of the parking, but yet, we want them to be residential apartments. So not only, right now, it's.
It's gonna be a problem too.
It's gonna be even a worse problem, because now, right now, the structures are being used for specific purposes, now you're gonna turn them into apartments, now you're gonna have people living there with cars there all the time, not just for a library event. So what we consider, we considered all of this, and we talked about it. And I think where the disconnect comes from is the fact that we made this decision over a year ago, over three meetings, which would be roughly about three months, and it was the members of the planning commission. So no one really else came to the meetings, the public didn't come, it was literally just us sitting there.
Were they noticed on the board?
Everything advertised for the whole year that we have meetings, and.
Is where on the website, that it's down?
The website, I figured.
Actually, it was every year in January, I'm gonna say, I'm pretty sure it's January, you have to put your, or your, like, your meetings and when you're gonna be, you always gotta meet on the first, when it comes on.
Quick and where?
In the newspaper, it has to be out.
Great, so I would point out to you that if I don't have the Valley Mirror, if I don't have a subscription to the Valley Mirror, I'm missing that, the website was down.
Go ahead.
I just want to say, it falls on the same day as a Borough Council, as their workshop meeting.
I think there's an assumption that the people in the public are constantly going to a website, or, I mean, I am now, I feel like I have to be hyper vigilant, because I feel like I, this happened, and I'm so, you know, I would've gone.
I mean, it never changes, it's always that same date, always, every month.
We know that now, but I'm just saying, all my neighbors, no one knows that.
Yeah, but and the other thing too, that I want to make sure that we're all on the same page, is the fact that we made a recommendation, there is no vote, we don't, we don't vote to make a change to any of the zoning, it's a recommendation based upon a review that we did as a peer committee, to say, we think this is what's right. You know, being progressive, changing, changing how we do things a little bit is really what we thought about. And again, it, I don't know why it took a year, so there was a big disconnect between the time we made the recommendation, because it had to come to council, it was brought up at a council meeting. So everything was brought up here, then it went down to the county, and again, it was a recommendation only.
And there's definitely transparency issue. I mean, I'm not suggesting that this is a malicious thing, I want to be clear, I'm just saying, communication is very much lacking right now.
Well, and again, this is, the members of the planning commission that were on there, I mean, I don't think anybody, if anybody wants to chime in on that, but that was.
We were not on, we just got on.
I mean, I don't want to rehash and say, like, you can go back and change the way it was, but moving forward, my, you know, as a resident, I would strive to make sure that there's more transparency and a better, you know, more communication. The fact that these signs are posted, you know, on the center of your office, that's extremely helpful, because, wait, you can't ignore that, big yellow sign on trees and poles.
Well, remember, any committee has to follow guidelines, I mean, there's guidelines they follow, you know, so, I mean, everything is being followed, followed.
If we look at it as a positive thing, at least it got me interested and more involved.
I'm glad to see you here.
I think we have another issue to discuss, whether or not this rezoning, whatever happens, it has to do with the Music Hall, Druski Entertainment, the code, and all of, you know, like, what's happening, why aren't they, why don't they have their own parking spaces?
Yeah, that'll be for another time.
But we'll see.
It's part of it. You gotta remember, there's such thing as, believe it or not, you may not believe this, your property is the prime example, there's grandfather rules, okay? Like, your house.
I've been told they're under grandchildren.
Let me just talk, please. If I go right now and I pull it up, you have a 140, a 150, 160, 170, so an R1 area down there. Your lot's supposed to be 40 by 100, your lot's 26 by 86. So when you bought your house, if someone reads a thing and says, you know what, that's a illegal house, because it doesn't mean zoning required. What you would have to do is go in front of zoning, to get permission to either buy your house or sell your house. Costs a thousand dollars to go in front of zoning, because yet they have an area now. Well, I looked at, I've been here for 13 years, I talked to the guy before me, he goes, no, that's not the way it's written. These walls now are written for new construction. So there is such thing as legal non-conform, and that's the, that's the, what you call.
It's been a lawful record, so it's a pre-existing non-conforming use. So if we changed, all of a sudden decided, we changed your zoning where you live, and we were gonna make it so no more residential houses could be there, which we could do, which wouldn't make sense, you wouldn't have to tear down your house or move, it would be a pre-existing non-conforming use. In other words, your use was legal before the change was made. That's been recognized in the law for 100 years.
So, what, Carnegie Library, we're gonna get this, so everyone understands, Carnegie Library is allowed to be there, because when was Carnegie Library built? Right, so then, I'm saying, it was met according to code, back then, okay? They had gymnasiums, they had the library, they had the auditorium. So we can't say, I can't close them down, because they don't have no point.
No, 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 I am suggesting that the Music Hall, I'd like to know, and again, it's another topic for another time, but when Druski, because it's not been the entire time, I've lived in a house over 15 years, when they came and started doing shows there and booking them, it's great, I love that we're known for that, but it's a very difficult situation for those of us who live anywhere in the vicinity, because it's like.
I understand that, but we can't, they have an auditorium, it's been there for, since it was built, we can't, I mean, parking issues are, and like PJ said, if we go, and PJ and I talked about this, R3, you might think it's a great idea to put an apartment down there, but like PJ said, you may have run into more parking issues at night, when everyone comes home from work and has to park there. Now, you have a B2 there, and PJ, I think, mentioned this, he said, well, one thing good about B2 area is people come from work eight to five, and then they leave. The people come home and they sit and live. So you may have less parking issues by going to a B2 than you would be going to an R3, that's why we're here today.
And it's really just to answer questions, everyone has the questions, and that's, I mean, I really do appreciate you coming on, and what it does is, we're open to clarify any of the misconceptions from the time that it was brought back to council to make that change till now. So we just want to clarify it and answer the questions that are there. You know, we could bring it back again to our next planning commission meeting and discuss it if it's brought up to discuss again, and we could make a change or not, it really depends upon, you know, how we answer questions, and, you know, everyone on the planning commission feels about the proposed change or non-proposed change.
I don't think that the problem you're talking about parking is only, you know, in your area, up here with Westfield, when there's something going on. I mean, we're a small community with limited area. When there's something going on up here at the field, or whether it's Trotman or it's Woodhill, all the residents in those areas run into problems with parking. It's just the area, we don't have that, we don't have that luxury of having extra space to accommodate whenever something's going on.
Main Street is the same way, Main Street buildings, okay? You know, we have complaints about residents, you know, I don't have nowhere to park on my street. Well, when you buy the house, 10 years ago, Main Street was there for how long?
Not at least it's a two-way street though. We're talking about a one-way street.
We have parking issues everywhere, so I mean, that's, I mean, it's hard.
But at the end of the day, we still want to bring in potential positive things to the borough, not deter things, and that's why we're here as a planning.
Someone told me I should turn, remove Main Street, because they don't have all-street parking. How do you answer that? You can't go, I'm current, you know, let's reinvent the park.
I would hope yours is in the best interest for the most people.
Yeah.
I trust anyone. I don't know that, certainly the way that this particular ordinance was presented to us as the public, my reading was that it wasn't well thought out.
No, and again, I can tell, because I was on the planning commission, this is my second year. See, things are breaking.
I don't really need it.
But we did, we talked about it, at least for three meetings, we talked about the pros and cons of everything. I mean, we discussed residential, we discussed business, and at the end of the day, even if Father Dudas' property came up, and that was the root cause of it, we realized that there were other potential issues with that area, that we needed to isolate now before it becomes more of an issue. So that was the reason for our recommendation last year.
And so in May, when we all came forward and there was the opposition, and, you know, I think we were presenting about it, of course, I think it's unfortunate that you all weren't at, maybe some of you were at the meeting, some of you certainly, I know that code was in some other cases. To me, before you move forward on anything, giving us this chance to talk about whatever recommendation you have, if you're still moving forward with this idea of a B2, then I think the onus is on all of you to talk to us about what that means for us, for residents. How will that change, you know, the landscape down on our block?
Well, and again, that's the reason we're here tonight, so for, from a code point of view and from legal, you know, for us, what we were thinking about it is the structures that you can't have, well, you can't say that you can't have, but, you know, you have the St. Ascension School, you have the other church on the corner of Ninth and Dixon, you have all those other churches down there that could be turned into something else and used, and that's what we were looking at, is not having a dilapidated structure, keeping that area clean. And really, my understanding with the business was it wouldn't change your home, we're not looking to revitalize and tear down houses and rip it all up, we want to use the buildings that are currently there to do that, and the one biggest thing that we faced opposition with was the spot zoning, so we couldn't do that. So we thought that, you know, with a limited number of houses, again, 25 to 30, to revitalize that area, to bring in businesses, to do something more along the lines of a Lawrenceville or Millville, to change up the landscape, we thought it would be beneficial to do.
If you're looking at Lawrenceville expansions and business expansion, business district, are you actually talking to them, working with them, talking about how they planned and evolved?
I've talked to just a handful of, there's a few businesses that I actually stopped at, and growing up down through there, I had friends down there, I did not per se stop and talk and say, hey, how did this work for you? But talking to the managers and the business owners, they, they like how it is now, because again, it's a popular place to be, but, you know, I don't, it wasn't that way 20 years ago, but they had to make a change, and I don't know who to talk to to who made that change.
Lawrenceville Corporation would be a place to start.
But, you know.
We go Garfield Business District, we go Garfield.
City Planning Commission.
City Planning Commission, but I'm talking about the people in the actual specific neighborhoods, like the Lawrenceville Corporation.
Well, and I can tell you this, I have a friend who owns a house in Millville, and they bought it for $25,000, and the house, right now, is going on the market for over 150, because of development.
Enough with the taxes, enough with the taxes.
Well, it raised the property value, but the taxes, and again, I didn't get into specifics, but, you know, they said that was probably one of the better moves that they had, because they developed the area. So we have potential areas of development on hold, it's just, we have to either choose to develop it or leave the status quo.
So regarding something that would back up the planning or support the planning effort, have you been working on or looking at complex planning, which is different from the strategic five-year plan that you have advertised on the website? This would be the actual, like, look at the zoning map and specific uses and, you know, plan to transition?
I have not.
Okay. That is the other thing I was asking about when we were originally talking about this, is that also would help me be able to support this type of change, is to just see what the thinking is behind it. I mean, I know a lot of the nonprofits and the businesses in Lawrenceville, I know folks who are actually moving businesses in Millville, I know what that means, and I know, change, nobody likes change, but everybody wants change, right? It's a painful process, and something, you know, it's a process where we all have to kind of come together in some ways and give some things up. I don't want, you know, the Reverend and his community to not be able to sell their property, if that's gonna happen, but I do want there to be consensus about what we're doing.
And that's why we're here tonight.
And it's hard for me to get behind, like, you can say, we'd like to be in Bloomfield, or we'd like, or I'm sorry, we'd like to be in Lawrenceville, we'd like to be in whatever, but what are the actual steps that you are taking as a committee to get the answers to put a plan in place? That's what I want to know. Let's not change, you know, how long is, I mean, my house has been there since 1905, so, and I'm sure there's been a lot of changes. I mean, I know if my house burns down, no one's gonna build a house in its place because of that, you know, very specifically about the fiber stuff, that, you know, you can't. So what happens if it burns down, then what are you gonna do with that property?
You would rebuild it.
But not with the.
You would rebuild it. People misinterpret that law, and that's incorrect. You're able to, it's called, you're not building a new house, you're rebuilding a structure, you're permitted to use, do that. What happens now, is when we tear down our house, we tell the people to leave the foundation there, because you're rebuilding the house.
I think one of the things that gives me the most pause is that. I think one of the things that gives me the most pause is that there's not a solid answer about the code and the code enforcement in this community. Maybe that's the way it is out there, but it seems like, you know, we're making exceptions or doing things that are against the district and what we're doing.
I'm not sure I understand that calling. There are laws and rules that we follow and I live in a lot of communities, there's, there's.
If her call's calling apart, she wouldn't be able to legal her house.
Well, I don't agree with that speculation, but I'm just saying like.
There's interpretation of this.
Let me just say, you said there's no transparency. I've been here for many years, I disagree a hundred percent with you on that. There are rules and requirements that we must follow, notify the public. Everything is done here because I'm watching. You have to make advertisements and so forth. Now, there's not a posting every time there's an issue being considered because it's not required. It's an additional expense. We do it and we have to do it when the law says so, like when we were gonna consider zoning change. How to get on our post, we did. This posting for this meeting wasn't even required. And we said, council and planning commission, let's do it as a courtesy because you obviously have serious interests and understand that. So we want to make sure you knew about this. So we're following all the notice requirements under the law in this borough that the law mandates. And every other community that are at work, it's the same. That's what it is.
I think you're pretty disagree. I think there's been a pretty liberal interpretation of some of his comments. That's one you're a little bit.
Thank you.
Reverend, is there any future plans of anybody who've been interested in buying the church and the school?
Father James Dudash, he even needs it for the.
Just leave it there.
It doesn't work. Um, we regularly have people still coming to look. We showed it to two people, two different parties yesterday. And as honest as I can be, the first comment, the first people that came and looked at it with a Realtor, they looked through and then they came out afterwards and they said, can we ask you something? And I said, yeah, I can't give you specifics, talk to our Realtor because she wasn't available. And they had their agent and they said, well, we went online and watched the zoning meeting and followed the zoning meeting from last May. And they said, it seems like there's a lot of crazy stuff going on at your zoning meetings. And I said, well, you picked the wrong one to watch. I said, it just, there was, it was what it was. So basically, their concern was, we really like the building, but is the zoning gonna change or not? We really like the building, but are we gonna be welcome here? And they said, it seems like nobody wants anything there. It seems like everybody wanted to stay. And I said, don't take that attitude. I said, if you're really interested in the property, come to the meeting on Wednesday night. And they knew it was gone. They've done a bunch of research and going back and looking at everything. So they were disappointed and I don't see them here, obviously, they didn't come. But they're following, I think they're watching. And then we had another one come that is a not-for-profit, but they said, our not-for-profit doesn't fall into the category of being a school or a church or a single-family residence. And they were interested in something that may fall in the lines of a vet, for veterans. And I just had to say to them, I love you, I love the vets, I love all this stuff, but I can't tell you what you can and can't do. And I cannot tell you what it's going to turn into or not turn into. So that was just yesterday. And we show it on a regular basis. And like I said, the first year that we had it, we got it on the market over two years now. First year, we had twenty-five people come through, the first twenty of them wanted, they came and saw Dave and John Arora. They all wanted apartments and they were all told, no, can't be done. And they said, but, and they're looking all around. And I said, I understand, their grandfather quote, that's what they called it. And so they, they said, I said, go up and see the, go up to the office. And they all came here and they all got, can't do that here. You can't do that. And that's what led us to the point of saying, the other five that we had, it wasn't gonna work out for what they wanted. They wanted businesses or they wanted something. And so we kept turning away clients. And then eventually, you run out of clients. People quit coming and they watch. So then what happened was, we actually got someone in that said, we're willing to go the distance. And we want to do something, and you all know what it was. These people wanted to have all different artists in there and they wanted to open it up for classes for the local people, for the youth. Discounted rates if they wanted to come, they wanted to put on shows, dance, theater on the first floor and the auditorium. They had a heating, you know, a commercial kitchen that they could heat and put out stuff for these other things. And, but the one thing they didn't want was to do it not-for-profit. They said, we refuse to do that because we want to go on the tax rolls and make something that we can at least cover expenses and we can have something to give back into the community. And they wanted to buy a house, they had looked around, chosen the house they wanted here. But they didn't want not-for-profit. It's not the organization that it was, but it was all about classes and arts and you all heard stories about all of that. And of course, as soon as that goes out, it changes from mouth to mouth. Oh, it's an art institute, oh, it's, and just like everything else. So they went the distance and they stayed, they got three ninety-day extensions after the original. They stayed for a year. And unfortunately, they took a lot of flack. They got some nasty phone calls, some threatening calls from people and they, and they backed out and they left. And within two weeks, they bought a building in Oakland and they're doing the same thing now, but they're doing it in Oakland. It was a great idea and it was something I thought the borough could use. And it went from being not on the tax rolls to being on the tax rolls, which was great for everything. Forgive me if I'm wrong, but if you make it a B2, it's not like someone can come and buy your house and put up a business there. I've gone through things here with our properties and homestead. The setback rules, if you tear something down nowadays, you gotta be twenty-five feet in from the alley, fifteen feet in from the street, ten feet in from both sides. I've got twenty-foot wide properties down here. I can't build a one-foot wide doghouse on if I tear the house down. That's where the rules are today. So if you're afraid that you're, you know, people are gonna run here to build something, I don't really think it's gonna happen in that way. If you sell your house, you can sell it to residents. You can keep it as a residence from what I understand. I know that when I talked to the woman at the Rusian Carpatho Society, she said she'd love to see the zoning changed because they have things they want to do there, but they can't do because of the zoning. Even though they didn't apply to change their zoning, they're limited on things that they can do there. At the time, Margaret's Church was, had applied even before us, they had come and asked about it. So it was the two together that kind of spurred on. And I assumed an odd thing, because we're not planning commission people either, and then it would be a block. Like, we're gonna change this block over and we're gonna do something. And again, I'm all about growth and bringing change to things, you know, and I'm all about people being happy too. I know it's everybody's house, I know how I feel. I live in Mon Hall, I know how I feel about my house. And I understand all of that. I just say that, again, I'm still in this position, or we at the church, when I say I, I'm talking for the church, they're still in the position of saying, year after year, putting tens of thousands of dollars just to keep from going down the tubes. You know, without any use, it's been nine years for us. And so we know it could be something and we know all these other buildings, like you're saying, whether it's the Rusian Carpatho Society or the church Margaret's that just got bought or any of these other ones. It's not gonna change the footprint of our building. It's not gonna change how big or small it is. When we ran it as a school, we had fourteen teachers, four administrators, they parked there every day. Did it affect you in any negative way when we were running it? I don't know, I mean, I don't live there, but I'm there every day because I check buildings, some property manager for all of them. And I see wide-open streets during the days, except when there's something at the library. And the library did have parking. They had a whole full block of parking until they built the Mon Hall Retirement Residence. We did our cantata there for thirty-something years at the library on every Palm Sunday. And we would park two hundred cars across the street where that Mon Hall residence is. But that's gone. It's gone, it's just not there. And so I've gone through the same thing, you know, where we are. When people have something for a park, all of our streets are filled. They park in our parking lot up at our church down here on eleven. And it's like, okay, for the good of the community, so, you know, you live with it and you may do. But I don't know, do you have any other questions for me? I want to keep going on.
Well, here, and I'm listening and I've been listening for a long time now. You really don't have anybody that's really one-hundred percent interested in this property. So here's my point. We changed the zoning, we put the cart before the horse. Because we don't have any clue of who's gonna move in here. And if they do move in here and like this school, this art school that was gonna go in there, we have a problem now because we have a building that's in decay because it's not being used. So what happens if this school would have moved in there and five years from now they moved out? We still have the same problem, but we changed the zoning and we don't have a clue of who's gonna move in there and what they're gonna, and what they're gonna move in there. Because once the building is sold, Reverend's done, he's done, he's gone. See you later, adios.
So let me answer your question there because, you know, that wasn't how you felt back a year ago. Hold on a second, hold on a second. I know, because I was there and we talked about it, we voted on it. So say five years, that is correct. Say five years, something happens and then the residents move out or the business moves out, right? The same thing that happens again with any other business that moves out, just like Best Buy. You find another business or something else to move in. If it's zoned residential and they're, what are you gonna put apartment buildings in there? So if they put apartment buildings in, half the residents, from what I heard, were complaining about off the park in the beginning with. So you're gonna be back into the parking situation again and having people in there with daily foot traffic. So what we were trying to look for was, it's not changing the fabric of the community, it's giving us something else that was beneficial to the community. So we thought about that for over three meetings. That's what we did, I know that's what we did. And to answer that, unfortunately, you can't predict the future. I didn't think Best Buy would leave the waterfront, especially with how busy it is. I know the Lowe's down there where my wife used to work at was the number-one Lowe's in the area. So, I mean, with all that heavy foot traffic, Best Buy's still gone. So you can't say that, station shakes closed. So, you know, we can't do anything more than just advertise our area to say, hey, look, come here.
Well, same as if it was a residential. We have a lot of renters buy our house. We get different people all the time. You can't, you never know who you're gonna get.
Right.
A lot of times, it's not good. I'm right.
I agree.
So, you know, if you get something, so that can't be a reason for us not to decide to move on.
But that was also another one of the reasons that the people that were looking to buy the building said, we're looking for the zoning change. Because if we buy this and we do this for twenty years and we turn seventy years old and now they want to retire, I can only sell this building to be a church or a school. Now I'm gonna be, find myself in the position of trying to do what you had to go through twenty-five years ago. So they were like, the zoning is instrumental in all of it and, you know, in everything. And the fact that they didn't want to get caught being twenty years from now, we're not changing, still gonna be an R1 and you gotta find a church or a school to buy the property. So that was one of the other issues that was on their plate that they said, we really want to see the change. We want to go on the tax roll. We're welcoming paying the taxes, we don't care.
And we all know churches and schools are starting, they're not growing, they're more closing. I heard like, you know, a rumor that, you know, Catholic, that Catholic schools, grade schools, they're thinking about closing them all. That's just a rumor.
Does anybody here go to the Hungarian? Does anyone go to the Hungarian Reform Church? You all live right down there?
Are we gonna rezone the entirety of Mon Hall to business because of all the churches that are probably gonna close?
No, I'm just saying that there's another one that's in this area.
There's a lot of churches.
It's down to like fifteen to eighteen people on a Sunday. We share accommodations a lot of times with them. And they're down to where they've had to do something with their rectory, the Hungarian Reform. And they're nervous because they don't, you know, they're looking at something in the future too. So two doors down from us, we may be looking at the same problem in the near future. And I pray not, I don't want to see them go.
Yeah, I mean, as of right now, I mean, there's no, I mean, church-wise, I mean, I don't think there's more than a handful, I mean, that I can kind of, that are actually still active within Mon Hall.
There's seven churches in view of my current board.
That's right.
I mean, and this is like the old, the mills, the bar, the problems, the funeral homes, the churches, all that.
And at the time, you have to remember, Mon Hall had over twenty-five thousand residents because of the stone mill. You know, so again, we do our history, right, because we know the area. So when that stone mill was populated, you had more people crammed into houses and apartments than you had anywhere. So the bars, the churches, everyone had their own religion and they had their own favorite bar to go to on every corner. You know, so unfortunately, that time is gone and our population's cut down to around eleven thousand one hundred. So, you know, we don't have that anymore. So, you know, trying to be proactive and still have a great community is really what we did over those three months. So, ma'am, I understand where you're coming from and we definitely did think about that, you know, when we made that decision last year, so. Does anybody else have any?
Yeah, I have. And I want this, I said it, this is gonna be the third time that I've said it because this is the third time that I've heard it. About, we did take a vote and you're absolutely right. I did vote yes to do it. But as I explained at the planning commission meeting, and I also explained it at a council meeting, I was led to believe it was gonna be a school. And I've heard it said how many times tonight that it was gonna be an arts and dance class school, whatever. I've heard that. But now that it's gonna be a profit, which I don't ever remember the individual who came and approached us about it saying that it was gonna be for profit.
Do you have Father Dudash's name with the actual intention of?
I'd get it, I'd get it.
I'm saying.
I understand you, I understand that you heard what you heard and I agree. And like I said, they were gonna have artists in the classrooms and then they wanted to do, keep, have classes also. So you can imagine the guy's a pottery freak. He rents a place, he puts a kiln in there, he's making ceramics, he's doing stuff. He's making it to sell. He may take it to shows and to fairs and stuff. Then he may also have people come in and do classes in ceramics. So it's not a school per se, a school and a not, and a tax-exempt not-for-profit thing. It was, he was gonna have somebody that he knew that wanted to do dance, somebody that liked theater, somebody, different people were gonna rent in the different rooms and then they would do it. But it wasn't a, we're gonna do a charter school, a propel, and it's not-for-profit. There's no money to be, no one's gonna make any money here. It wasn't that, it was never projected. And they did say at your meeting, they wanted to be on the tax rolls. They didn't want the, because there would have been no need to change anything.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to put my point out.
Yeah.
That what I heard, and I also said it at one of our planning commission meetings, and I also said the exact same thing at a council meeting, okay? So let's clarify that right now. I was led, I was led to believe that it was gonna be a school. And this isn't the first time that I've been to either planning commission meeting or council meeting where I heard the word "school" brought up. I don't want to go in depth in that stuff. But here's, but I'm done.
When you're done.
Here's the thing, we can change the zoning, we can do whatever we want. But again, I'm the one, in fact, Dave, if you recall, I'm the one who said, if it's gonna be a school, then just leave it go because it's a nonprofit organization.
Right, and I told you, Mr. Ondo, that there was never a school mentioned because I wanted to bring, you know, bring them in front of.
There was a school name mentioned.
To what? A school, like he said, they were gonna teach.
Not a public school.
It was not gonna be a public school or charter school or anything. It was more of like a training center or a.
And it wasn't not-for-profit, it was never.
It was never, I would have never brought them up. I didn't need to change anything, that's what I told you. I said, believe me, if it was a school, we want to be here in any of the plans.
And just as an example, you could have a real estate school, but it's for profit, but it's still called a school. So there are schools out there for profit and schools that are not-for-profit either.
And another thing too, and this is the first time I've heard it too, about Lawrenceville. Lawrenceville, this isn't Lawrenceville, this is Mon Hall. This isn't Lawrenceville. You can't compare our town with Garfield or Lawrenceville or Bloomfield. You can't compare it. Because we do not have the business district that they did or have. So that stuff, let's just wash that stuff right out. It's not Lawrenceville, it's not Garfield, it's not Bloomfield.
I disagree with that also. Why are you limiting what Mon Hall can be?
I'm not limiting, I'm saying, if we vote, no, 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 because we don't vote, we recommend. If we recommend this to go to council and they change the zoning, these people are the ones that are gonna suffer. Maybe five years from now, if they decide to sell their home and it's a business district, they're the ones that are gonna suffer.
Well, okay, let's go with that.
Yeah, let's go with that.
More than likely, if it goes to a business district, and I wish I had a real estate person here, your property value increases. Now, there are probably statistics on, I've been told that, okay? I know Mary's concerned that her property taxes go up, but it would go. Is that a good problem or is it a bad problem? My thing is, would you want your house to?
My thing is, would you want your house to be appraised at 20,000? Or 120,000? It depends. If I'm living there and not the, in, in position to sell my house, I want it to be 20,000. You know why? My school taxes roll up. My county taxes roll up. And my borough taxes are rolling up. But when I go to sell that house, guess what? I, I want it to be 120,000. So is that a bad problem or a good?
I agree if it happens.
So it's only beneficial to the people who are leaving, just like Ascension. To those of us who wanna stay there and live in this community, it's not beneficial.
Well, I have a question.
Yeah, we, hold on, hold on, one second. So here, here's what we have to do. I mean, there's no finger pointing going on here. This is supposed to be a question and answer situation, right? So we're, we're getting out of that realm here because we're getting, getting a little heated. So let's get back into the question and answer forum and get all your questions answered because we're getting off the topic.
All right. I have questions.
Sure, come on up.
I'm Erin Stone. I live at 601 East 10. Um, so this other side of, of 9th was rezoned to business several years back. Is that correct?
Yes.
How many years ago?
Seven.
All right, so yeah, around seven.
And how many businesses have gone into that area?
Two, two and three?
Two. In seven years. So what I wanna know, aside from Ascension having one buyer potentially. That was willing to go in and, and make changes and operate their building. What led this, this board to believe that this is going to become Lawrenceville? That people are willing to come all the way up to 8th Avenue to go to businesses here?
So let me, let me explain. Okay, so again, uh, hearing what you heard. I made the recommendation that we're not Lawrenceville, but we need to be progressive like Lawrenceville. Lawrenceville was progressive in doing stuff. So Mon Hall should, why can't we be progressive? Why can't we make a change? So you're right. So the 9th Avenue corridor there, that, that's on the north side, you did have two businesses go in there. Seven years ago, right? Let's say that didn't happen. You're gonna have dilapidated structures there. That what we would wanna have. I mean, I'm just, I'm asking the question back because.
But there's dilapidating structures on 8th Avenue and that's a business district.
You're 100% correct. So what we're looking at doing is, it was brought up to our attention, again, what we mentioned last, for last year, that we had a potential buyer. We seen the issues underlying with the other structures that were there. And figured if we can make a change, it would be a global change to be beneficial for the entire structures that needed to be changed.
But your structure is not for the residents.
Uh, why would it change for the residents?
Well, what benefit does that have to us? That now a building can be within five feet of my house? And because, because the setback lounges are extremely different for a B2 than they are for an R1. And I'm personally affected by this right at this moment, as Dave well knows. So like the statement that was shared here earlier that it wouldn't affect your home is incorrect. It wouldn't affect your building, but it would affect your quality of life. Because in a B2 district, a building can be within five feet of your property line. And the setbacks are a lot more strict than an R1. So my residence, which is currently right next to Propel School, which wants to expand. If you had made this decision to go to B2, they're gonna be five feet away from my house. It's not gonna help my property value. It's not gonna help my quality of life. I think the same thing for the other residents here. If one of these buildings gets turned into a check cashing center, which is allowed under those ordinances. That is not gonna help their property values. And they don't have any protection against what that becomes. So same thing with Ascension. Yeah, they could sell to an art gallery, which I don't think anyone here has a problem with an art gallery. But there's nothing saying that it has to be an art gallery forever. And there's nothing protecting us from it becoming something else entirely down the road. I think one of the other things that I wanted to bring up is whether or not a new use under R1 could be considered. Cause I think that's another, um, compromise where if it's something like a nonprofit or something. That has to do with arts and culture, that could be allowed under R1, that would allow that building to be sold for that kind of use. I personally would have no issue with that because then that would protect us from future development that would be unwanted. Um, while still allowing that building to go into use. So I don't know if that's a viable alternative, but I wanted to bring that up.
It is a viable alternative. It was something that I had talked about briefly at a prior council meeting. That we could create a conditional use, a new conditional use whereby council could set conditions. And we could limit and restrict what could potentially go in there. So it's another option. But again, it would have to be considered by the planning commission. They would have to make a recommendation to council, but that is a legal option.
You realize how much better that often sounds to the people who live in the community in terms of?
Absolutely.
I mean, you're allowing flexibility in, in the Reverend's situation. But what you're proposing to do has blanket impact for. And I, I'm sorry, it feels like you're trying to minimize it. 25 residents. That's, there's 25 homeowners down there that this, this impacts. Period. And you can say the best intentions and all these other things and that's great. But you won't even be on this committee 10 years from now and, and the whole government will change. Like. Make an exception within R1 and I think we all sleep better at night. Change it to B2, blanket statement. And I think you got a lot of upset homeowners.
Well, and again, you know, the reason we had this was to get everyone's feedback and, and understand. So that way, you know, everyone, we know how you feel as a committee. And, you know, we can make a recommendation or not make a recommendation. So it's, it's, it's all based upon your feedback tonight. That's why we wanted you to be here.
And I'd like to make a response to that too. The, the idea, the suggestion you made is viable legally. But conceptually, it's kinda hard to come up with how you would do that. Because if you make it very narrow, then it doesn't help anybody. Cause they'll never find a buyer anyway. What do you accomplish? With the B2, then it's wide open. You don't like that. But he has a much better chance, he and the other churches, if they sell it, will find a buyer. So. How do you find some common ground, a compromise of this conditional use so that it's not so narrow that it doesn't help anybody? And it renders the reuse of the church useless? I mean, you'd have to have, it has to be broad in some regard to make it viable and reasonable for repurposing. So, you know, those are, that will take some time to sit down. The planning commission and, I mean, if they're interested in that concept and with input and recommendations from the residents. But it has to be somewhat broader. It's not gonna serve any purpose. You get my point?
Absolutely.
I mean, personally, I would throw out if it could be something like advancing arts, culture and education. Seems like it would allow what he's had a lot of interest in, while still keeping it specific. But, you know, obviously that's an ongoing dialogue. Um, the one other thing I wanted to say was, there was some discussion about how making it B2 would somehow improve the parking situation over. Um, over R3, which I don't think is, is really correct because. Um, in, in B2, there is no restriction that the businesses have to operate nine to five. Right? That business could be booming in the evening and you could have just as much of a problem with parking then as you would with an apartment. There is not a restriction that it has to operate during the time when people are nine to five office hours. So just to, to clarify that.
No, and to be honest, we, we agree with that. That's, that was the, 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 the feedback that we were getting was, well, you know, having a business where we would have a lot of parking issues. So we, we agree that there, there potentially could be, but also if you make it the residential and you go nothing but apartments into these structures. Then you're gonna have a parking issue again anyway. So the parking issue is completely invalid, I feel. Uh, because you're gonna have a parking issue regardless if it's a business or residential.
I just agree with that. I mean, if you're talking about returning this into a Lawrenceville type residential district. I think we can all agree that the parking situation there is much different than residential streets, whether they're apartments or single family residences.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Would, would you agree that they're based on what the father had said, or probably there's a lot of interest to convert schools that we've seen in many communities into residential housing? I mean, I, I think that's common repurposing of these types of buildings. So the question is, you as a resident, would you object if it was changed to R3? Would you oppose that?
No.
Okay. Curious to hear that. Thank you.
I'm sorry, can I have your, um, house number and your address? 601 East 10.
Did anyone else have any questions or comments?
Maria Frye, 124 West Virginia Avenue, Mon Hall. I don't live in their area, but I have been to these meetings. And I just wanna say, I am a resident of Mon Hall. I do come to meetings. You are almost residents of Mon Hall. And I guess it always amazes me how people will sit and say, they're not happy. They don't want that. They don't. The majority of these people here are not in favor of what you're suggesting. The one person is. And I understand. He's interested because he was offended with them. But as humans, as residents, as taxpayers, they're also. They should be, they're, they should get the respect from you to say, you know what? We're looking down the road. Well, you know what? Just like Erin said. Seven years ago, when the other side of 9th Avenue was zoned. Two businesses have gone in. Now that, that sounds wonderful. But let's be real. I live right off of Main Street. I think we now have five businesses on Main Street that are empty or gonna be emptied. I mean, now the word is falsehoods. He gets a, he gets an offer. He's out of there too. He's already limited his hours. Why don't we consider sending these people who are commercial people down to the waterfront, up to Main Street? We have that zoning available and it's not, but trust me. I'm on a street that has the only legit driveway on the street. Parking is, is a problem everywhere. But on 9th and 10th Avenue, my heart aches for them. Cause the times that I go down to the library just to get walks. Between the swimming pool and the activities that go on, we treasure that library. That's not even the, what is it, Druski? I mean, they bring in hundreds and thousands. And they're only going to improve it because they sub, bought the grant. I don't know if it was part of our grant writer, but I'm just saying. I think, I think this committee needs to say, you know what? What I like, if God forbid, that Homestead Park Church goes under at the top of Shady Avenue. And now we're gonna have to rezone that area. And I'd like to know how everybody would feel that lives over there. I'm just saying. I know we need to look ahead. But I also think we need to respect people. And these people take the time to come and talk. And personally, I think the Valley Near, I don't do the internet much either. So I'm not on the internet to see the zoning, you know, meetings. I know you're the first, the same on this council, which I think is a farce. You, why can you be here and be there? But, um, I just wanna say. I think as all of us are taxpayers in this community, we need to respect each other. I don't care if you live in the projects, if you live on Main Street, if you live down here in little Mon Hall. If you live up in Mon Hall Gardens, everybody has problems. And when you're hearing more people against something than in favor, I don't understand why it continues to have to be discussed. Move on. Let's find somebody to live in the best spot. Let's find somebody to get into Steak and Shake. Let's get somebody into Sherman's on Main Street. Pick a little look. There's businesses. And I feel bad because Father Dudas under here wants to sell his place. But his place is in a residential area. He knew that when he, he bought it or whatever. He was sent there. That's my opinion. I really think you need to think about the people who are there. And how this would affect you if that same situation was in your, in your backyard or on your street.
I think that's why we're having this meeting because they're thinking of the people here that live there.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
That's the main reason why we're having this.
Yeah, that is the reason. Because there was so much concern with what we proposed. And then on top of that, I mean, really to get down to it, he has interest in his building. So if people were interested in Steak and Shake or Best Buy, they would go into those structures. I mean, it, it's, it's, it's not that they're not available. Sherman's is covered repurposed. It's for rent. So again, if someone's not interested in those facilities and they are interested in that, we were looking ahead down the road to make a change. And that's why we're here, we're hearing everybody's side. Joe?
PJ, how many of these people here actually lived in the area that we're talking about? Okay? The soon to be, okay? Okay, so you say there's what, 25 residents down there, 25 single houses? And we have, what, five people, well, five houses, cause you two count as one. You two count as one. Okay? Okay, well, I'm just saying, you know, you know, this, you know, Mrs. Frye's talking about all the people here, you know, we should listen in. They, I think they are listening to all of you. Okay? But I mean, you got a handful of people from the area. Everyone else doesn't live there.
Who's everyone else?
Uh, well, you have the guy, the gentleman next to me. I don't live there. Mr. Petrucci doesn't live there. Mr. Mike, you don't live there? Uh, Mrs. Frye doesn't live there? She doesn't? I'm just saying you don't live there.
They have no right to be here?
No, I didn't say that at all.
The residents asked me to help. I'm here for them.
Every, hold on, hold on a second. Hey.
They wanted me here.
Hold on a second. Every Mon Hall citizen has a say. That, that's why we're here. I think.
Well, I'm useless apparently, so.
What was that?
Apparently I'm useless.
Hold on a second. Hey, hey, we're, we're not to turn this into.
This isn't useless.
An argu, an argument. Okay? Every Mon Hall citizen has a voice. They have a concern. They're allowed to voice that.
Yep.
Right? Again, you know, I think what Mr. Valles was stating was, the people that are here. What he was pointing out was there's not 25 residents or 25 homes being represented in the area. Do you know what I mean? It's a handful of those 25 there.
Can I speak to that? Because I think Jen brought this up earlier about the transparency. It's not easy to maintain the information about what we're even talking about tonight. When this first came out in May, when the council was ready to take a vote on it, we got a very vague letter. Saying that something was being voted on. And if you wanna find out about it, you can come to the Borough Building, which I did. And then I went through the runaround to get the information about what was even being discussed. It's not like it's readily available on the website.
I totally disagree with that.
Can I finish speaking? Can I finish speaking, please? The information is not readily available for people, what, if and when they find out because you posted or it was in the newspaper, which very few people read anymore. Even if they are notified that something's happening, it's very difficult for them to find out what is happening. You might have to take off work to come up to the Borough Building to get that information. So that's why you probably don't have as much of a representation here is because that information is not readily available.
Quite frankly, I'm not planning on coming to every one of these meetings if they have to do with something in Upper Mon Hall on Main Street. I don't live there. It's not impacted by me. If there's an agenda attached to these meetings on January, in March, in April, and it tells me in, the discussion that's going to take place impacts my community. That might not be what's legally required. But whatever was legally required and posted in the Valley Near. Was posted back when, you know, Lawrenceville was a rubble field. Like, things have changed. I, you know, I, I. Tell me, tell me when it's impacting my area. I will show up to every last month. I travel for a living. If you're meeting in April, I'll plan my, my trips around that so that I can be here. But I can't be here every April 5th, March 5th, May 5th. I, 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 if it has nothing to do with where I live in, in my community, I can't show up to every meeting.
And I think the last council meeting is a testament to how many people do show up when they're notified. Because several of us neighbors went around and notified the neighborhood and distributed the information that was being discussed. And we had a huge turnout here to the council meeting. So people do care when they're notified and are informed about what is happening.
And, and we're not saying that. And, and again. What we said was there was only a handful of you guys being represented tonight. Being that there's no vote being taken place. This is just a question and answer session. Okay?
Sure.
So, and, and I, and I will say this, and I understand. I understand everyone's frustration. And, and, and let me, let me just get this out. I mean. No matter what we do as a community, whether we post it on telephone calls, whether we put it online, whether we put it in the paper, someone's not gonna see it. And the frustration's always gonna be there. So we know that. And, and we understand your frustration. That's why we're trying to hold these meetings. So that you guys get, and I understand, sir, trust me. I, I work 50 plus hours a week and this is something I do for free. To, to try to better my community. So I'm in the same boat as you and I understand that. And I've had my fair share throughout the years of living here. I lived here all my life. I, I get it. But no matter what we do, we'll never appease and, and please everybody with a meeting notice, with an agenda or anything else. So we try our best. So, you know, word of mouth and come into the meetings and saying, hey, next month we're gonna have this. Or sometimes we might not even know till the day of, cause the planning commission doesn't even require anybody to sign in for the month. So we might not know until we either have a meeting or I get notified via, uh, an email at the last minute. So I get it. We wanna try to be as, as transparent as we possibly can for you guys so that there are no misconceptions of what we do.
Yeah, it's, it's, I guess my point is it's tough at the beginning of the comments. When you said stuff about this was discussed in this period, this was discussed in that period. And it, but, but hold on. It was almost as if like, this was discussed previously and none of you took the time to show up. That, you may not have intended to insinuate that, but that's how I took it. And the fact that. And the fact of the matter is that had I known that that meeting was planning on talking about where I live, I'd be here.
And I understand that completely. And again, that was not the way it was intended. You know, when we talked about that over a year ago, it was actually brought to council because council wanted to know how we were progressing with that. So it was brought up through council as well. And again, it's just the meeting notification forms. Again, I know we're not going to please everybody. So we'll do our best of what we can to get you guys notified. And I mean, I know that they actually put up two different flyers down on the avenue for you guys for a public notice.
And that was very much appreciated. So thank you.
Well, like I said, we want you guys to ask these questions so that you can get the right answers so that you're not sitting there for two months, sitting there boiling on the wrong information. Because all that's going to do is just infuriate you. And when you get here, you don't care about anything else except for your main point. And sometimes, you know, if we can just get all the answers that you need now, that's...it makes it easier for you to put your head on the pillow.
I think it's also been hard because I went as soon as the posting was on a tree right in front of my home in May, I went up immediately to get the packet of materials. I got the materials, yes. This time when the posting went up, I went up to the Borough Office the very next day and I was told there were no materials and I was told verbally that we were talking about moving to an R3. That may not have been what you all discussed, being discussed tonight, but that's what happened when I spoke with the administrative staff.
So...
So please, maybe make a statement. Like, I write scripts for people so they know what to say when they're on a phone call sometimes. You know?
I understand.
This is what this is about. Otherwise, too, I know that it doesn't seem like the agendas are posted. Is that what you're saying? Are people not having...
Again, there are some months we don't even have an agenda till maybe the day of.
So that makes it hard for us.
It makes it hard for us as a committee to even notify any of you guys.
I understand that.
So we're in the same boat.
Maybe that needs to change. I don't know.
Can I ask one question?
So... I don't want to leave the guy hanging. He had his hand on him.
Hold on, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, gun. I got a question on the zoning. R1, what is R1, B2, B3? I am currently catering on Eighth Avenue. I have a building next door I'm renovating. My wife and I are going to move into it on Eighth Avenue. Behind us is a halfway house on the corner. I call it a halfway house, okay? Now, how are these businesses being allowed in here according to the zoning? If it's R1, B2, is there anything that prohibits them coming in? I mean, we have guys urinating in our alley. We see them. We're out there seeing them taking a leak.
They're sexual predators.
Yeah. So how does this...how does this get allowed in our neighborhoods?
Well, that's why Dave's here. He knows that for you.
And that is actually a county program ran through a church.
So how did the county get them in? Didn't the borough have to give...didn't you guys have to give them permission? Or do they just come in and...
Church of the Episcopal or... One on Texas Street. Eighth and...
The Clutch of the Rock.
Clutch of the Rock.
Yeah, well, there's a long story behind that.
There's a long story.
Yeah, we challenged them and it went all the way to the Pennsylvania Supreme Court. And unfortunately, the...because they're operating as a church under Freedom of Religion, which is a long-recognized amendment and right that everyone has in this country, the court said that they were permitted, because it was part of the church, to bring those people in. We fought them.
Now, they get paid for that? They get paid for bringing these people in, right?
They get a check.
So it's for profit?
No, not for profit. It's a church.
But they make a profit because it's non-profit like...
I don't have their works. That's how they're registered.
You gotta say something.
You're preaching to the choir.
Right, we try.
We try.
Yeah, right. But I think that that's the fear that we have with this zoning.
That's everybody's fear. It's a church.
We see it as dumping... We're under growth. Yeah. We're... It was a church. So now there could be how many more churches down there? Four? Those churches could run the same thing.
Same thing.
So that's a possibility. Churches are...
They could do that in our building right now.
Sure they could.
They could be in an R1. Either these with the sex therapists and the...these things are allowed in R1s and he can tell you.
That doesn't mean we should change it too.
It's not something that the borough has. It's something that state, it's been run through the courts. And they can do that now with our building and we don't want that.
But I think a community can...
It's exceptional.
Let's attract them.
Well, they tried to...that's what they tried to do.
With police, present something.
But they...I'm just saying, they tried not to let that happen.
My thing is, is as some...I live down there, but I'm not living on the street that you is being rezoned. But it's like they're not going to have the support they need to live peaceful, lovely lives because they have a halfway house that was allowed in by the back door, I guess you could say. And that might be part of...if I live there, and this is how I feel about my street, is I don't have the back of Munt Hall to support me and the halfway house is able to destroy the neighborhood. So that might be why, a little bit of why they don't want it. Am I wrong?
Well, the answer, if you guys were just listening to what Greg said...
Right.
It's not that Munt Hall didn't have the residents back.
No, I know, but...
Munt Hall challenged...they challenged the occupancy of that building all the way to the Supreme Court to not have them in there.
Right, but they still had people peeing outside there.
Unfortunately, that's just like a bar on Eighth Avenue or a bar on East Street. You're going to have that, unfortunately. But, you know, Munt Hall did have...they tried to support the residents of the avenue and they lost.
Can I say something? I live on Ninth Avenue. I'm two blocks down from that place. I knew nothing about it going in until I got a flyer from the police department stating that there were 18 sexual predators. Across the street, we have Turtle Creek Mental Health, that they're laying all over the street. They're shooting up, they're doing this, they're doing that. I called mental health and I said, "You got a woman," and he knows about this, "you got a woman, a heavyset woman sitting out there in the summer that doesn't wear underwear and sits like this." I came to the police department and made a complaint. I finally had to call mental health and then they did something about it. We knew nothing about those two things. Put them on your street, that's what I said. Because we didn't appreciate it. We did not...we never had anything of it. But I'm not going against you. I know that you said you tried to do your best. But you got laws that are so crazy and you just put these people in areas and we have to deal with it. I don't go out at night because they roam over Ninth Avenue. And I said, "Thank God I'm licensed to carry because one of these days there's going to be somebody laying out there."
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, I understand your concern. I mean, you know, being a fireman in Munt Hall for 25 years, we know...I know the area.
You guys know.
So I understand that unfortunately, those buildings and facilities, especially the mental health one, has been there for my 25 years.
How many times have you come down with a burp toes?
We do it all the time, man.
And you could be out on an emergency and you're called down.
We do that. I mean, and we have backup plans and contingency plans if we're on a call, but that's yours or there. But just to get back on the point, we've tried. We know...and Munt Hall does have the residents back. It's just unfortunately, when we go to petition things to take precedence of the residents, we lose sometimes. And that was one of the instances where we did.
We got a meeting, Mr. Vaschevich, I believe I remember you talking about, like, we were talking about this very topic. And we talked about the fact that if it was an R3 and another one of these, you know, these halfway houses or mental health type of, you know, home to move in, while it is allowable, there is something, if I remember you saying correctly, that you guys could do to restrict that. I thought they had to apply for like some type of special exception. A special exception.
Yeah, I don't know. I'd have to murderize myself with the zoning code.
I remember that.
I don't know how they're allowed or they...
Is it occupancy? It depends on what location they are and they have to get special, conditional use or special exception.
And I think we talked at that time about, you know, if we did go to R3, one of the things that I remember as a person sitting in this audience during that conversation was that you said, "If we could pledge that we would, you know, consider those things as a case-by-case thesis, that would make me happy."
Yeah, I don't know how they're permitted now, where they're permitted, or what their restrictions are, but there are...I think they're not a permitted use. So when I say permitted use, means you can just walk in and do it. But a lot of times we have...we have to have permitted uses for a lot of things. That's what zoning is. You have to represent all the broad interests across the spectrum, which you can limit certain things to a conditional use where they have to meet certain conditions or a special exception depending. And we may be identified as that now. I don't know.
Is a halfway house permitted under B2? Not this loophole church thing.
I don't know. I don't know how, where they are defined in the ordinance. I don't have that...
Pretty much anything is permitted under B2 if you read that.
You can look at the ordinance and see, I mean, they're listed, but I don't know where that fits in. There's a definition section. I don't know if that halfway house or whatever the term is, you have to find a definition that most closely fits that use logically and then go back to the zone and see, is it permitted in that zone?
Right. So I mean, that would be another concern, right? I mean, obviously, if you fight something to the Supreme Court, you'll lose.
Well, but that's for church. For freedom of religion, the court strongly protects that.
Understood, understood.
Whether it's a ruse, which I argued or not, mainly it's freedom of religion.
Right, but you understand that like if it's permissible under B2, like those homes down there, you don't have to do anything to them to make them a halfway house.
Right.
They got everything in them. I'm putting a halfway house tomorrow.
Right, well, I don't know...
You couldn't stop. That's a concern of the people who live there. Whereas you're saying under R...
Find out where they're even allowed.
Yeah, but under R1, like you got to take it to the Supreme Court to get it done. Like, I'll take my chances if something's got to go to the Supreme Court versus, hey, I'd like to have a halfway house here.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
May I just ask? I realize we're not necessarily in closer to answer on what to do with this area, I mean, other than to read where it is at the moment and think more. I know we also talked, again, I don't think the Planning Commission was necessarily in attendance. This is the same type of meeting I was talking about where I remember Mr. Vaschevich talking about the special exception.
It was at a Borough meeting.
Yeah, it was...
It was a council meeting.
It was a meeting following the May 26th.
It was a council meeting. She's...this is the first Planning Commission meeting I've attended.
Correct.
Because of the interest of council, so I could offer legal import and Mr. Karen can offer zoning import.
I'm saying, it wasn't a public hearing about this. It was the meeting that was called after that and it was on the Borough agenda. I think a lot of us came forward and said, "Here's my name and my, you know, telephone number, et cetera. I'd like to be contacted to continue this conversation." We gave our name and number specifically to Becky and, again, like the next thing I hear is a posting of a tree and then I'm told this is that meeting that we were promised. I was just wondering, like, why did we give our names and phone numbers if we weren't going to be contacted?
I have no idea.
Becky notified everyone. She called, either called or left a message. Everybody's like, that's what she called me.
She did not call me. She did not call...
She had like eight...
I called 10 people.
I'll check with her tomorrow. I asked her, I said, "Did you call everyone on that?" And she said, "Absolutely."
I think the larger question too is just having an ongoing discussion is the other thing that we were kind of expecting. It's more of like in a community advisory role rather than question and answer on each specific issue that comes up about like what are we doing to be progressive and like what is the plan and how can we, you know, continue to keep this neighborhood vibrant and what ideas do people have? I think that's what I was expecting out of it.
Yeah.
That's my theory.
I don't know if, you know, with the Planning Commission, you know, that could be a fairly valid role if you want to, you know, look into it. You could try to do more than, you know, I don't want to say than what we have, but there's a lot that's there that you got to jump over, leap some bounds to get the correct information on and to do the right thing. So, you know, I've always wanted to do something to better the community. So the fire department was one, the Planning Commission was a start for a second. It's, you know, you look and you try to advise and that's what we did, you know? So, I mean, we always meet and, you know, we encourage more people to come, but...
Yeah, I mean, something, I mean, just Mr. Slisser, you were saying earlier like potentially adding something to R1. Like, if you want to have a dialogue with residents about how broad something needs to be to work for the Reverend, but give us enough protections, we'd love to have that dialogue in a dialogue. Like, you know, it's great to have that conversation, throw out ideas, talk about what works and what, where the concerns are versus, hey, no, we still want to make this thing B2 or, you know, to have what feels like sort of something other than that dialogue, right? Like, let's talk about what works for R1. I think that would be a really good compromise if we can figure something out.
Okay.
But again, if it's presented in a formal meeting like this, like, hey, this is it, like...
Yeah, and again, you know, we made a recommendation so that the actual legal process is to take it to the city council and then it goes downtown and comes back and then it goes, it's open to the floor for all the questions. I mean, I've seen countless items be changed that way, but, you know, this one here, I mean, I'm glad that you guys are interested in it. And this is where we're going to go. So, you know, Mr. Vaschevich can actually come up with something else, look at the actual zoning so that we don't technically spot zone anything. And we could always look at addressing it and making a different change. I don't think no one on the Planning Commission's opposed to that. We made that recommendation based upon what we felt was in a better interest for the community. So if he's willing to do a little bit more homework for us, for the legal side, we'll gladly listen and take into consideration.
And I'll certainly do that. Council directed me to do that. I'm here at their disposal. Council said, listen, get involved, help Planning Commission as much as any legally to hear the residents' concerns and, and issues. So hopefully we can find some common ground. So you make a good suggestion, sir. So my recommendation will be, you come up with some ideas and bring them to, you know, the next meeting. And we can start with that and see if it's something that, you know, the Planning Commission might be interested in considering further. So I, I'd say take the lead on that and, and put something together. I mean, I don't wanna speak for them because I don't vote, I'm just an advisor legally, but, I mean, it seems reasonable that they will be willing to hear what your suggestion is and, and talk about it.
Sure.
What is the process for that, since it seems like the meeting times and agendas are so much in flux?
It's pretty much every second Wednesday at 7:00 PM in the community room.
So the 13th- So if we show up here, are you definitely having a meeting? Because it sounded like sometimes you don't have meetings.
Um, that's, that's the whole thing. So we usually, from meeting to meeting, we'll, we'll, we'll figure out if we're gonna have that next meeting, uh, based upon any topics that come up. So, I mean, we had our meeting last month because we knew we were gonna have this one. Um, and I'm pretty sure we're gonna have another meeting next month to discuss everything that went on here tonight.
So would it be on the 13th or the 27th?
That's the second Wednesday?